The public's always on mute.
Yeah, always. Okay, see, the attendees just came in.
I'm promoting.
Hello?
Hello?
And Dave's on now. He's promoted to a panelist. Dave, are you there? Yep, there we go.
Hi, Gabe.
Hello, hello, everybody. Sorry, I was late.
Hey, Dave.
Are we all good now?
Good.
Yep.
Okay, um, I would just like to start off, I'd like to welcome everybody. This is Coventry Planning Commission, May 27th meeting. It's our first Zoom meeting. Please be patient. We're gonna get through this. It's gonna be painless. Just please remember, if you're not speaking, I'd like you to just mute yourself. And then when you're ready to speak, just unclick the mute. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Flynn. The chairman is gonna run the meeting. I will have, for the applicants, I do have all your your materials that you submitted. I will put them up at your request when you want. If you want me to flip to the next page, just ask. I can do all that. I have everything that you might need. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the chairman, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Flynn?
Okay, I'm here. I'd like to welcome everybody to the planning commission meeting, Wednesday, May 27, 2020. It's 6:40. First, I'd like to, the termination of a quorum. Mr. Mattson?
Yeah.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Kenny?
Here.
Secretary Lukowitz?
Here.
Vice Chair Colonian?
Here.
And Chairman Flynn is also here. Okay, number three, we're gonna skip because our staff has already explained number three on the agenda. So we're gonna go to approval of minutes. 4.1, February 26, 2020. Can I get a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Just say your name, please.
Carl Mattson, motion to approve.
Okay, and second?
Kevin Ray's seconded.
Who's that, please?
Kevin Ray.
Okay, Mr. Ray. All right, and I'm gonna poll the members. All in favor of Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
I wasn't here. I wasn't at the meeting.
You'll abstain from that?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Lukowitz abstains from that. Vice, uh, Mr. Colonian?
Yay.
And Chairman Flynn says yes. Uh, we're gonna go to 4.2, and this is the March 14th site walk. So this is just a approval of the minutes for the site walk. So can I get a motion on that, please?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Uh, who gave the motion?
James.
Okay, Mr. Kenny, and seconded by Ms. Lukowitz. And I'll poll everybody on it. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Colonian?
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn says aye. Okay, we have two ratifications on the agenda. We'll do the first one. It's 166 Reed Avenue Platte, owner Renee Street, applicant same. It's a preliminary plan approval of a two lot minus subdivision with no street creation. AP 72 lot 51.2 zone, 20 residential. Can I get a motion for that ratification, please?
This is Carl.
Aye.
That, please?
Hey, Carl.
Who gave the motion, Carl?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mattson gave the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second, James Kenny.
I got a second by Mr. Kenny. And I'll poll. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Colonian?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn says aye. Okay, those are two ratifications. Under old business, we have a pre-application proposed office building and garage. Owner Mike Professional Tree Service and Company, applicant same. Proposed 30 by 75 office building and a 50 by 50 garage. AP 44 lot 1, unit 3, zone industrial 1, at 75 Airport Road, unit 3. Is anybody here for the applicant?
Yes, Attorney Almodice will be here for the applicant, as well as really Tim Bean is here as well.
Okay, we had a site walk on that, but if you wanna just do a little just might wanna summarize the project, staff, or do we wanna just get right into the discussion of the site walk?
I would just go straight into the discussion of the site walk.
Okay, I apologize to the applicant. I had surgery, could not make the site walk. I'm gonna hand it over to Vice Chairman Colonian that was at the site walk. And anybody else on the board that might wanna have any input that was at the site walk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a while back, but my recollection is Mr. Beard's going to erect the building and move his vehicle parking and office up to, up Reservoir Road to this location. It is zone industrial. I didn't see anything, you know, out of the ordinary to be dealt with. One of the major benefits, it's taking the trucks in and out of his current location and then back and forth to this. This site is been a problem. I know for some of the people, like, there's conflicts with people going back and forth to the high school. So this should alleviate some of that, and that's kinda what I got out of the meeting. I don't know if anyone else that was on the site walk has anything to add.
I'd like to add something.
Go ahead, Mr. Ray.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a great idea moving his facility over there because of the traffic, but I'd like to put a restriction on if he rents that out, don't, don't, he can't start that, the problem up again. You know what I'm saying? Because he's moving it over there for his own problem for getting his trucks out on the street. So if he rents it back out and have more problems out on the street with the kids going to school, I think this would be a restriction on that. You understand?
Can we do that?
It is a zone industrial 1.
Right.
But he does have a plan in front of the board, and I'm really just looking at the plan in front of the board. I would think if any, any use is changed, they would have to come before us once again.
Yeah, because I think he's doing a good job of what he wants to do in resolving an issue that's on that street now. I just don't wanna go back to that issue, you know, six months, a year from now, when he rents out the building again. Because he's doing it because there's an issue, and what he's doing is correct. I think he's doing a good job moving everything over there, less traffic, coming onto the streets, easier for the kids to get to the school now. It's gonna, a lot of hassle, because I'm a truck driver, and I know what he's talking about. So I just wanna bring that up, and my knowledge on that, so hopefully we can do something about that.
This is Jim Kenny. We're concerned about the new building. As far as trying to restrict the use of a property that's not even before the board, I don't think we can do that. We would have, that would have to be something that before the town council, I would think, and then push before the boarders, because they are zoned industrial. So I think unfortunately, what we're looking at is just what he's trying to do over on Airport Road right now. I understand what you mean, Kevin. My kids went to high school as well. But I don't know if that's something we can address at this time.
I think we're just gonna have to wait and see. We're just gonna have to wait and see.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, Mr. Ray's point well taken. Can I just have the rest of the commission, if they have any concerns, and then we'll go over to Mr. Beard's counsel?
Glenn Anderson, I believe it was, was it two buildings or just the one? I thought he was putting up two buildings.
There was two buildings, sir. There's gonna be an office and a garage.
Right.
The proposed 75 by 30 office and a 50 by 50 garage, as you can both see on your, on the screen there.
And it's on the agenda also.
And that's what we reviewed at the site, that's what we reviewed at the site walk.
Right.
Great idea, was a great plan.
Right. Okay, thank you. Anybody else on the board have any concerns? Okay, if I can hear from the applicant on this?
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Bean, who can explain the project in more detail.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, sure. This is Tim Bean, Commonwealth Engineers.
Hi.
Representing Mike's Professional Tree Service. Basically, you summarized it. He's got an existing site at the end of Airport Road. It's an industrial complex. Several condominium, industrial units back there. He's got one of the lots. The site is existing, it's active. He wants to put up a building. It's got two components to it, an office section and a 50/50 sized garage. It's located near the entrance to his facility off the end of Airport Road there. And we already have wetland permit. It's obtained back in 2013 with a toll.
We lost Tim.
Oh. I'm back. I'm not sure, yeah. I lost something there, too. Not sure what happened. But basically, we already have a wetland permit from DM for the proposed site plan, and we need to go back to DM just for the septic system. So after tonight's meeting, we're gonna get the septic permit and come back for development plan review, the preliminary plan, unless, under the COVID situations, we can do something administratively. It's a simple project. I assume it's still development plan review, preliminary plan. So knowing that, we got just miscellaneous other items to do. We gotta put in a proposed private well to service the facility bathrooms. And there's also required 16 parking spaces for this type of development, which we have plenty of space on site. There's 16 acres of land that Mr. Beard owns. Other than that, I'll just open it up to any general questions, and we can answer them.
If I can say one thing on a DPI, you're gonna have to come back for a public hearing. Is that true, staff?
That is true, yes. And the COVID does not give me the right to approve this administratively. So he will be coming back before this board, whether in person or a Zoom meeting. That's yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the board have any other questions for the applicant? All right, I don't hear any, anybody else on the board? No? Okay, I think we're good. We'll see you when you come back.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Very good, thank you.
All right, under new business for discussion and our action?
Mr. Chairman, could I just interrupt for one second, please?
Go ahead.
Did we vote on 5.2 ratification or only 5.1?
Oh, you know what? We might have missed 5.2.
We did.
Yeah, okay, so could we just step back to that, please?
Thank you, thank you, Rick, for that. We're gonna go back to 5.2. We have a Howard Avenue Contractors Office. This is for a ratification of an already made decision in a garage area. Howard Avenue Realty LLC, applicant S&amp;S LLC, co-owner Michael Sakosha. And that's AP 96 lot 181, zone industrial 29 Howard Avenue. So can I get a motion to ratify that, please?
I'll make a motion for a favorable ratification of item 5.2, the Howard Avenue Contractor Office and Garage Area, as you just indicated was the item on the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Colonian, can I get a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Lukowitz, and I'll do a quick poll. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Secretary Lukowitz?
Aye.
Vice Chair Colonian?
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn is also a yes on that, and thank you very much, Rick, for catching that.
Got it.
Okay, now we're gonna go to new business. This is an extension, master plan approval extension for Reservoir at Hope Furnace. DRBJ Construction and Company. They're asking for a one-year master plan approval extension on a 32 lot, single-family residential cluster subdivision with street creation. AP 89 lot 3, AP 97 lot 6, and it's an RR2 zone, and that again is on Hope Furnace Road. Is anybody here representing the applicant?
Yes, Attorney Nicole Martucci on behalf of the applicant. Can you hear me?
Yes, how you doing?
Thank you, I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Members of the board, we're here pursuant to Rhode Island General Law's 452340. We have a master plan approval, which is currently set to expire on June 30 of 2020. This is going to be our second extension by right. The developer is in the process of getting everything that they need together. We anticipate preliminary plan being before you, perhaps in the next couple of months. But because the extension that we are currently on expires on June 30, we are exercising our right under Rhode Island General Laws for the next one-year extension, although we don't need, we don't think that we'll need a whole year. The request is before you for the one-year extension.
Any discussion from anybody on the board on that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the extension of the one year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the one-year extension of the original master plan approval that was granted on November 19, 2014, and subsequently extended, subject to the same seven stipulations contained in the original approval.
Okay, motion by Mr. Colonian. Do I hear a second?
Second by Mr. Kenny.
Second by Mr. Kenny. All right, I'll poll the board. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Colonian?
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn also says aye.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
I just wanna thank the board for their attention to this and for signing in. I know this is an awkward situation, so thank you for everybody for taking the time to sign in tonight.
Thank you.
Good night, Nicole.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Okay, next, we have 7.2. This is a pre-application for a major land development. Also scheduling of a site walk. It's on Calventown Road. The owners is Calventown Realty LLC, Rockwood Realty LLC, applicant Revity Energy LLC. Proposed for 5.3 megawatt ground-mounted solar installation. AP 85 lots 1 and 5.3 and AP 92 lots 1, all zoned RR2 rural residential. And again, that's on Calventown Road. If the, is there anybody here for this?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. My name is Robert Murray. I'm an attorney with the firm of Taft and McSally, located at 21 Garden City Drive in Cranston. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant Revity Energy LLC and the property owners. On our call this evening is Mr. Ralph Palumbo, who's calling in. He is the principal of Revity Energy. And David Russo, a registered professional engineer with Dupree Engineering, who has coordinated the submission of the pre-application plans to your board this evening. We wanna first of all thank, thank you and the board members for arranging for this meeting. And we wanna thank Mr. Crossman for his assistance in bringing us to this point on the agenda. This is the beginning of a dialogue that Revity Energy wants to have with your town and the planning board. As you know, this project, which as described, would be a 5.3 megawatt solar facility, would fall under your regulations as a major land development, and we would have to go through that process. But in addition, in the RR2 zone, such facilities are only allowed by special use permit from the zoning board. So tonight, at the pre-application stage, we have a good handle on the property and the site development opportunities, but we have a ways to go, and we hope to have the opportunity to present this project to you and the community going forward. As you stated, in speaking to Mr. Crossman, we would welcome the opportunity to have a site visit with the commission. The plan that has been submitted as a pre-application plan prepared by Dupree Engineering has a, this is about 102 acre site. It's a joint venture between two property owners, Calventon Realty LLC and Rockland Realty LLC. The plan that's on your screen right now is sheet four of a four-plan set that was submitted with the pre-application. As you look at the screen, the bottom half of the property is owned by Calventon Realty LLC, and the top portion is owned by Rockland Realty. This property, we have already had it flagged, so we have a good understanding of the wetlands on the site. We understand what our limits of disturbance would be. And access to this solar facility would be off Calventown Road. As we proceed forward in the development of the plans, obviously, we'll meet your regulations in terms of providing landscape buffers and the requirements that you have in your subdivision regulations and zoning for a major land, a major solar installation like this. The Revity Energy, just by way of background, Mr. Palumbo, who's on the phone, is the principal. Revity Energy is one of the leading developers in the state and region for solar energy, of renewable solar energy facilities. I've represented them in a number of cities and towns. They are, they have a number of projects already built and operating. Attention is to build this project and ultimately sell the energy to National Grid. But the, the experience that Revity Energy has offers two things to Coventry. First, just the experience and understanding the industry and what's needed, but also we've tried to always work with the community and to, you know, be accessible, answer questions, try and react to feedback in a positive way. And that will be the same going forward with this project. The, we were familiar with the setback requirements in the RR2 zone. We meet the maximum coverage limitation. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that is in essence where we are tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Russo's available for technical questions, but, you know, as I said, we're at the pre-application stage, and the detail that will follow from this evening will, will answer many more questions, but we'd be happy to try and answer any questions and hopefully work with you on a date for a site visit at your earliest convenience. Thank you.
Before I have Secretary Lukowitz make plans for the site walk, is there anybody on the board that would like to address anything that they might see before the site walk?
What, one quick thing, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, the applicant, I know you're telling the plan just to the north of the solar panels. It looks like maybe there's an existing is there gonna be concurrent use with the solar operation site?
I, I lost party, Mr. Colonian, but I think your question was regarding the property to the north owned by Rockland Realty. That is part of a quarry that while we expect that that, some of that activity will continue, and we will isolate the solar panels from that, from that activity.
So that entrance to the north is going to am I still on? Because my box isn't lighting up.
We can hear you.
Okay, that entrance to the north then will be used access to solar panels, but that's gonna be continuously used as it is currently for that operation?
Um, that's a very good question, Colonian. I would, yes, let me defer to Mr. Palumbo if I could.
Yeah, this is Ralph Palumbo. The quarry operation is in the upper left part, outside of the red outline of the property contracted. That's gonna continue as an active quarry, in my discussions with Mr. Benaro. The footprint inside of the solar red line is not going to be an active quarry. My understanding is Mr. Benaro, his access point is going to be the upper access point. I'm not sure how to describe it, but it's further up in the northward direction of Calventown Road, where it hooks in from there. The building that's on the premises down closer to the solar facility is a residential rental building. And the plan is to leave that residential building there, a relative, I believe a relative of this, Mr. Benaro rent that as his residence. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I was, what I was trying to ascertain is if we were gonna see a massive reduction in the truck traffic entering and exiting the quarry operation once this was built, but I think you answered it, and that's a negative.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
And might I just add, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, the, the access point that we're showing on the screen right now off Calventown Road, as members of the board may know, once these facilities are up and constructed, they generate very little traffic, other than a monthly maintenance check, pickup truck. There isn't once, once we get the panels installed and the excavation work done, in terms of the immediate impact on the access point in Calventon, that will be, will be very, very limited.
I agree. I was just looking for a reduction. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any questions? Okay, hearing none. Secretary Lukowitz, do you have a site walk, a time for a site walk, please?
No, we'll do the site walk on June 3 at 6:30.
Okay. We have a rain date for that?
Um, no, I don't.
Following week?
Uh, yeah, the 9th.
Okay.
June 9th.
Is that okay with the applicant?
That's a Wednesday evening, June 3, Mr. Chairman. As far as I'm, I'm available. Mr. Palumbo, are you available?
I am.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, why don't we, for the, for purposes of planning, we'll try and, we'll be there early and identify spot on Calventown, the best spot on Calventown Road to access the property. We're dealing with 102 acres. You know, we'll, we'll stay as long as the board wishes. We'll try and make it a productive site visit. And, but for now, why don't we, I'll communicate to Mr. Crossman with any more specific information as to where, where we'll meet. But we'll, we'll find a spot on Calventown Road to enter the property.
Yes, Mr. Murray, I believe there's a cabled off access road to get into that property, so if the, if the owner can just remove the cable for that night, we should be good to go. It's all flat land, very gravelly. I know the site well.
I know you do. I know you do.
I, were you talking about the entrance where it comes in off the Calvin Town Road to the existing gravel site right now? So I would contact Ben Arro, was that what you were saying, sir?
I think the chairman was referring to another location farther down the road.
Okay, all right, so.
We'll confirm that with Mr. Crossman.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. All right, Bob.
Okay, just giving a heads up to everyone. I've planned a site walk on June 3rd at 6 o'clock for the printer plan, which is 7.4. So we're going to do that one first at 6:00, and then we can do the solar at 6:30. Is that a problem for anybody?
I will be recusing myself from 7.4, but Mr. Coloneyan will run that part of it.
I don't see a conflict. In fact, I was going to suggest that we hit the other one.
It makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. So we probably won't be there, Mr. Murray, until 6:30.
That's fine.
Okay.
You'll be down the road, I get it.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I guess we're ready for 7.3. It's a pre-application for a major land development. Scheduling of the site walk, residence at Bork, comprehensive permit application. Owner Green Light Farm LLC, applicant Green Light Farm LLC. Anybody here for the applicant?
Can I contact the meeting for the applicant, Mr. Chair?
Hi, Mr. Coloneyan.
I also have Mr. Bean in this evening. This is a comprehensive permit application for a parcel that has an existing master plan approved for 16 four-bedroom homes on it. The proposed comprehensive permit is for 96 two-bedroom units on the 70-acre parcel, of which 25% will be affordable housing, serviced by a community, a public well and septic. It is located on Town Farm Road. And it currently, the current use of the property is the private airstrip that's on the property.
Did I hear community, well, and septic?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody, anybody on the board have any questions before we schedule the site walk? All right, Secretary Lukowitz, if you want to schedule that site walk?
Okay, the site walk will be June 8th at 6 o'clock. And rain date, June 9th at 6:30.
That's fine.
Is that okay with the applicant?
It is.
Okay, Mr. Palumbo?
We'll make sure that the wire is down and you can pull right in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to be recusing myself from 7.4, and I will give it over to Vice Chairman Coloneyan. And I'll probably see everybody on the 10th of June. I'm not going to come back on to the meeting. So, Mr. Coloneyan, if you can take over. And I'm going to be out. So I'll see everybody, I guess, that's the 10th staff.
Bye, Ron.
At the site walks?
Yes.
Okay, I'll talk to you. Bye.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Okay, item 7.4, known as the printer plaque. Owner Ronald P. and Lisa M. Flynn, applicant Ronald P. and Lisa M. Flynn. It's a proposed two-lot minus subdivision, assesses plaque 60 Lot 64 in the R20 residential zone located at 21 Calvin Town Road. It's on the agenda tonight to schedule a site walk. We have someone here for the applicant. I think Mark is on. Just give us, I've seen the plan, maybe just for the benefit of the other board members, quick overview, and then we can schedule that.
Good evening, Mr. Coloneyan, members of the board, Mark Boyer, Boyer Associates. I'm here for the Flins who own the property at 21 Calvin Town Road. As the vice chair said, AP 60 Lot 64. Presently, the parcel has about, or approximately 1.3 acres of property. It's a single-family residence with some associated uses, driveway, shed, backyard. That residence is serviced by a private OWTS and by Kent County Water. The Flins are looking to subdivide approximately 27,000-square-foot lot to the north of the property. That lot would conform to all zoning requirements, with the exception of frontage. It's an R20 zone. I believe it's 120 feet minimum frontage. As proposed, the new lot would have approximately 90 feet, which would be within the 75% that would be allowed for an administrative variance. There really is no other way to subdivide this lot. To increase that road frontage would have a huge effect on the wraparound driveway. And for those of you who come around that turn on Calvin Town Road, I think the turnaround, wraparound driveway is a better way to keep that. Just my opinion. We have had soil evaluations done. We dug a few holes in the back of the property that weren't terrific. There was some rotten rock there. But we dug two holes generally in the vicinity of that shed. And I believe we had either six or eight-foot water table. So getting an approved septic is not an issue.
Okay, does anyone, any member of the board have any questions? Okay, hearing none, I guess. Madam Secretary, if you'd like to schedule the site walk. I think you already told us, but.
Site walk will be June 3rd at 6 o'clock. Rain date, June 4th at 6:00.
Very good.
Hold on.
Is that okay?
Let me just go back to my notes here, because the other site walk we scheduled for Wednesday, June 3rd at 6:30, and the rain date's the 9th. You don't want to keep, you want to still have the rain date for the 4th?
Well. Yeah, why not? Unless anybody has a problem with it.
Why can't we keep them both on the same night?
We can.
It's just that, Sandy, it's so tough for people to get out. If they're going to go out to do one site walk, why not go out to do two?
Okay.
So it'll be, the site walk will be Wednesday, June 3rd, and the rain date will be Tuesday, June 9th at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
That's okay with you, Mr. Boyer?
Yes, it is.
Park right in that wraparound driveway?
Yeah. I was going to defer to Mr. Flynn. I think that may be the safest place to park.
Yeah, it is. Okay. And thank you, I guess we'll see you there.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
All right. Okay, we still have item 8 on the agenda, which is just, I guess, informational that the Coventry Planning Commission will conduct a public hearing for preliminary application on the proposed Oaks at East Shore, submitted by the Tylo Land Company LLC on Wednesday, June 10th, 2020 at 6:30. It will be via livestream. This was the public hearing that was originally scheduled for March 25th. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Director of Planning?
No, I had spoke with the chairman about this date. I hope this date is agreeable with the rest of the board members. I didn't want to put them on this evening, because being this was going to be our first Zoom meeting, I wanted to iron out any kinks that we might have. I thought the meeting went excellent, by the way. It couldn't have gone any better. And I thought, you know, we have the public hearing at that date. It would probably be the only thing on the agenda that's that evening, and that will allow us to get acclimated before we have. It will be a public hearing, so the public will be calling in that evening. And, yeah, that's basically what's going to go on. This has been something, this was originally advertised and scheduled for our March 25th meeting, but we have not had a meeting since. So, you know, I'm anxious to get this meeting going, and that's why we scheduled a special meeting for it on the 10th.
Russ, what time was that again?
That'll be 6:30.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just interject, it'll be a Zoom meeting, not a livestream meeting.
Yes, it will be a Zoom meeting. I apologize. Yes, no, it'll be a Zoom meeting. If I said livestream, I'm sorry. It'll be a Zoom meeting, just like we had this evening.
That'll be fine. And I appreciate it. I hate to see these projects in limbo because of all this. So anything we can do to keep them moving. We said we would be willing to meet twice a month after we missed a couple of meetings, so that's great. Okay, if there's no further discussion on that item, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Carl Mattson made a motion to adjourn. Sandy Lukowitz made a second. I'm not going to do a roll call unless anyone is opposed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a good night and stay safe. I'm glad it was nice seeing everybody.
Same here.
Same here, take care.
Bye.
Good night, Donald.